Welcome to the Monday, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty-three Orange City Council meeting. All council members are here except Councilmember Steele tonight. We always start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I invite you to stand and take a slide.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where justice stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for that. Next up is the approval of the agenda. We'll approve all the items that we are boarding on and we'll go over that list before we vote on it. So in case there's something else that we want to take off, would you like to say, give it a stab at that?
I'll take care of it this evening. I'd like to pull items number three, Claims and Bills, approval number four, approval of the next draft work session, and number five, Equipment Law Agreement. And accept the rest as is.
Anything else? Okay, so right now what we've got on the consent agenda is the number one city council meeting minutes of April tenth, twenty twenty-three. We have two city council work session minutes of April tenth, twenty twenty-three. I will pull it off number three, four, and five, and we'll do those first before the finance report. Number six is approval of resolution of appreciation for planning commission share, resolution number seventy-five thirty-nine. Shout out to Mark McCutcheon for his year as the Planning Commission Chair. Thanks for all your work. You did a great job. Number seven is the approval of the contractor for demolition of one forty Hathaway Hill. Number eight is the appointment of twenty twenty-three seasonal employees V three. And number nine is the emergency water main bypass at the Coffee Bridge. Anybody have any objections to those on the consent agenda tonight? They say no objections. I have a motion with a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I know that passes four zero. Okay, so that'll bring us to number three. We took three off, three, four, and five, so we'll start with number three, Claims and Bills. Matt?
Yes. I did. I would, my reason for doing that, there was a portion in there, and I don't know if we can bring that up, about paying an overage on the budget for Long Lake Fire.
Can you hold pages on off?
It's actually down towards the last page. Go up and break that.
Forty-six thousand ten dollars and fifty cents.
Forty-six thousand. Okay, I'd like to start out, Ron, with this question being directed toward you for what exactly is included in that amount?
According to the contract, if there is an overage, we would pay our percentage of the operating budget. The invoice that we received just says forty-six thousand as our share of the overage. I did contact Long Lake and ask for some detail, and I can tell you that some of the big pieces of what are included in there. There's, their big overages were fifteen thousand dollars. That said it was the payout of their fire chief's unpaid sick and vacation. So when he left, they paid him out, and that's, that's included in their overage. Fire call pay is over by twenty-one thousand dollars, which is pushing fifty percent of an overage. And the response was most calls in five years, which doesn't necessarily make sense to me, so we need to follow up with that. And then there's some other items in here. Winterizing, other equipment boat maintenance, winterizing B eleven, which is the, assuming that's the one I'm going to talk about. But then, additional parts for the Kodiak, which I don't know what that is.
The Zodiac.
Yeah, the Zodiac, yeah.
One there in the book.
Yeah, exactly. And then there's another really large overage for, in the area of seventeen thousand dollars, and maybe Mr. Crosby would know what this would be. It says training slash certificates for eight plus firefighters. Do we?
So may, maybe the new firefighters will put it through training elsewhere, and that's what that's for.
Yeah. And then there was this one, I have to find out more information, on two, five thousand six hundred dollars, and travel slash mileage reimbursement on a line item that they budge at zero for. So, I have no idea.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. First is, so, under, under our existing contract, we are obligated to pay any overage they send us?
That is what the contract says. Attorney, I suppose, could make more arguments, but our understanding is that we always have to pay the overage. Last year, there was fifteen thousand dollar overage, so it's a few years in the realm.
I personally haven't reviewed the contract, so I'm not able to advise on that myself. But I can maybe know, then we can clarify the obligation in the contract for sure.
Okay, and then how about the accrual? If that was the payout of some of the benefits for the, for the chief? So they, are they accruing in his wages for time off?
No, they are not. Some cities do, we do. So if we have a fund that has a dollar amount in it that would cover, like the deputy chief will be leaving us, retire. When he leaves, we have the money to pay his unpaid leave balances set aside in a fund already. Long Lake doesn't do that.
Okay, so there, there's enough there. If, if everyone's in agreement, I, I would like to get more details on what is precisely that we're being asked to pay. Is this coming out of the operational overage? Is this all coming out of the operational?
This is, this is an operating budget.
Right, so if we're doing some capital improvements on some of the stuff, I don't know if it's fitting in, in this bucket? So I would like to know more about it. I, if, I'm not sure why we're, we're, I'm not why, I'm not sure why we're not accruing for vacation time and, and stuff like that, all that's pushed forward, so I would like to better understand if that's really our obligation. I want to be good on all of our obligations, of course.
We want more details.
But, but I'd like some more details on it.
We can, we can do that, and as I told you before the meeting earlier, that's why this was written as a separate check compared to the normal operating, or to the operating bill that we're by contract obligated to pay in a, you know, in a timely manner by.
Was there an overage three years ago?
I'd have to look. I can go back three years, so if there was, it wasn't a big one.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, I was gonna ask something similar. Has there been an overage in the past?
You said last year fifteen.
No, last year fifteen. There have been overages in the past, and sometimes there's underages that we've been reimbursed for, but they were normally not, even in the fifteen thousand dollar range, that was the first big one that I recall. But I, I can look back and.
And this is between us last year, right? Should have had some visibility to this also, so. Any other discussion? I can make a motion.
No, if you're just wanting clarification, I, I would agree with that.
So I'll, I'll make a, a motion to approve the claims and bills minus the Fire Protection Services two thousand twenty-two fire overages in the amount of forty-six thousand ten and fifty cents.
I'll say a minute.
Any more special? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I know that passes four zero.
Okay.
That will, that's number three, right? Okay, that'll bring us to approval of the next draft work session, which is number four. And I think I, I pulled that one off because I know we had a couple of things that were put on here for our May twenty-second. And I would make a motion to move the community survey discussion to some of the ready at the end of the year, to see if we want to make that a priority for next year, or if, or if we don't. And I would delete the meeting decorum discussion at all because the political agreements don't have any place in our council meetings or work sessions.
Now, how are these getting, how are these getting run here?
I can answer that, for that question, that last question if you like.
Okay.
So the process, we've kind of established, as you recall, the, this, having a, a draft work session agenda is a fairly new thing. The way that I've developed the, the table there in number five of upcoming possible subjects is first of all, historical subjects that are reoccurring every year. So those are predominantly the budget-related ones that you see on there. They, they happen roughly that same time every year. The other way that things have been on there is, is council members asking for something to be on there as I throw it on there as a, as a draft now, so that you can discuss them. We can figure out what, set the agenda out when you vote for it.
I think they should probably always be now in consent. So in case there's something that got put on and we can catch for some reason, that's.
Do you know, I'd rather, here's another way to do it is, because I, like, the retaining wall came as a request of mine to get added on there. With what we did in the work session today, I think we should just have them at our meetings and talk about the items instead of going through staff. We can, we can just do it here for future work session topics and have those conversations before they.
First, is having to have motions to put them on or take them off. And we'll talk about, and see if we agree at the moment, put it on for the next time. Which, how we were doing as we were approving the agendas, if there was anything anybody wanted to add, versus just getting put on by any one person or two people.
Right, I mean, that was the, the genesis behind having this council action was to allow the council, because the council, you're the ones who set agendas. You know, normally as part of the regular meeting, you set the agenda, you just did at the very beginning of the meeting. In work sessions, a lot of times we're trying to project whatever those subjects are. One, so that we can devote the appropriate staff time to those various subjects to be prepared. And then, and two, is this was meant just to be a mechanism, I think, to describe just what you're saying, is a, a means for the council to have some discussions about what those subjects might be, and, and then to just try to capture them in the table so we're, we're all on the same sheet.
Adam, I have a question. What from staff's perspective is a way of handling work session agenda items that is streamlined and efficient and gives you enough heads up?
I, I, I mean, I would love it, but in, you know, like today's work session, we would say, hey, we, we want to talk about some future work sessions, and we'll just, we can just add them to the schedule.
To throw ideas in a work session for the future?
Yeah. The other, the other place is, is in, in these meetings.
Because I don't think like this one, we didn't, we wouldn't have had enough time.
We wouldn't have.
So I just think we just need to have the work session just not on the consent agenda item. Nothing changes from the last one, basically, unless we've made changes at the council. And then if you want to add something, that's when we can discuss. Because as we're approving it, or, that would be the time, versus having some, that's what we have, that we have to take.
My opinion is that work session's a great time to informally discuss, and if we do give ourselves the hour today, and we've been a little bit different, we, we should have a little bit of away time, and it's helpful to not feel that we've got all the agenda to work through and to hold in our head. So I think it's a, I'm fine with the idea of throwing out discussion in an informal way or ideas with staff in a work session.
Yeah, I'm fine with that too, if we have extra time.
If we have time.
If we didn't today, then, yeah, I think it's a good idea, we can talk about it then. But I think the, ultimately, I think what we're all saying, we want to talk about them before they get on. And then, I guess I, that's.
See if it's something you do want to discuss.
So where we do it, we either do it at the work session, if we have time.
If there's time, we do it here, but if we're doing it here. Have a not on consent, so it's not a man, conversation, if we need to have a conversation. Okay, we have a motion, there's a second.
Ah, I need to discuss a little bit more, just to make sure.
We have a second, yeah.
Okay.
And we'll discuss until we have a second.
Okay, I'll give a second.
And discussion.
Yeah, I need a little more discussion. I just want to make sure I'm clear that what you're asking essentially is that we formulate the work session agenda ahead of each meeting, or throw out the ideas, and then formalize it in the meeting. And vote on it for that session.
It's only formalized here.
Right, right, but to throw out ideas in a work session, assuming we have time, I mean.
But not, not automatically put in on.
Yeah, yeah, if we have time.
Not.
If we have time, that's fine, or we just do it here, because we obviously have time here.
Right, and then that goes back to something I said in a previous work session, was at least I don't like to feel rushed. Because these issues, like we just found in the retaining issue, they're complex. They do need some breathing room and some time. I'm fine with throwing out ideas in the work session, and also, as you're saying, to take work session agenda items off consent, because then we can really be in agreement that we're all, we've got our eyes on those, and that we're in agreement about what's coming. I think my only question is with regard to work session agenda items, it may be at times that one council member has ideas or two that are valid ideas, and this is a place to discuss them. So the, the survey decorum is something that I feel strongly about, given what's, essentially what's happening right now in our community. So that is something that I thought was worthy of council time, at least in a work session, just kind of flush some things out, be able to discuss it as a quorum. And given that we had some time on the agenda for the rest of twenty twenty-three.
I'm sorry, I moved the one to December eleventh, that's April's end of year, what we want to do next year. That kind of gives that discussion, if we feel that that's important.
Right.
And the other one is political agreements don't have any place at council meetings or work sessions.
So getting back to the survey question, the importance of doing it early in the year rather than later is that if community survey may be budgeted for, we can't budget for that in December, but we need to be budgeted for it earlier than that. I mean, there's a lot more detail to that, but it would be my preference that we're talking about it before the budget cycle from twenty twenty-four.
That would be way before, so I'm still going to keep it at December. I have some in motion, I've got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I know that passes three one.
Okay, should we then, this is a good time to talk about what else is put into place, because when will we be ready to, will, will staff be ready to talk to us again on the?
On the Boulder Wall?
Yeah, on the Boulder Wall.
As I remember.
By May twenty-second?
But we, but we don't need to make that decision today.
No, I'm sure we can wait.
Yeah, we can wait till next, if we need to, we've got a lot more time, we don't have time for that. So we're not losing anything, like, and then.
Okay, so, and what we will plan to do as staff is, knowing that we, from the earlier work session, I mean, if we want to have some follow-ons, it'll give us some time to talk about how we would do that. So the next work session, if we want to talk about that at the end, we can give some recommendations on how long we make time to prepare those things. Sounds good?
Okay, well, that'll bring us to number five, the Equipment Law Agreement for Command Vehicle of Long Lake, for Houston Long Lake Fire Department.
I asked for this one to be pulled off the agenda here too, so. Okay, so to provide a little background, command vehicles, correct me where I'm wrong here. We, we gave a police vehicle to Long Lake to use for the fire department. And did we charge them to use that vehicle? And then how long ago was that?
I want to say, I want to say it's at least a year ago.
Yeah, it seems, it seems like it's a year. And on that vehicle, do we have any sort of written agreement about it?
We do not.
Okay. And then, the, the, this is a motion that puts our new command vehicle. So Long Lake bought one, we bought, well, Long Lake bought one, we paid eighty-five percent of it, right? That one? Correct. And then we bought a second one. And then, this is, I want to make sure my facts are, are correct here, is that in December, when the fire chief was coming over to here, there was a conversation with the administrator at the city of Long Lake, asking them if they wanted the use of our command vehicle, the second one that we had. And at that point in December, Long Lake's administrator said, no, we don't have a need for that vehicle?
At, at that point, correct.
Okay. And then, part of our negotiation of compensation with the new chief was to provide him the use of that vehicle, and he's been using that since then, and we're obligated under our agreement to provide him a vehicle.
The, the agreement, the, the employment agreement with the fire chief does include the provision of a taken vehicle.
Not necessarily that specific vehicle, but a vehicle. Okay. So now they're asking for us, they're saying, okay, actually, we do want that vehicle now. And they want us to send it over to them. We propose a written agreement of terms of use, essentially, there.
Correct.
And then, in their meeting, in Long Lake's meeting, they, their administrator was quoted as saying that he was not in agreement with this agreement, this.
Well, I mean, part of, maybe get back to more of the, of why we're needing an agreement, because it's like details of who ensures that, who's supposed to take care of it, who's supposed to maintain it, where the other vehicle that we had has had an accident, and now they're disputing them having to pay for it. And they said we should.
That's, that's been resolved, but at, at the time, there was, yeah.
Okay.
Little bit of discussion about, well, who has, who pays for what.
Because there was no agreement in writing.
Correct. Okay, so, thank you for demanding, if that's the right word, unagreement or written agreement. I think that's prudent for a variety of reasons. So then, to me, it becomes a question of, if we've obligated ourselves, and we've already given this to our chief, that opportunity was provided to them, they said they didn't want it, we obligated ourselves.
To the chief because of.
To the chief because of that decision, and now they're saying, no, I guess we do want him back. I'm saying, no, we've already made our decision, it's with our chief, but we will continue, I'm open to, with a written agreement, is allowing them to continue to use the other vehicle they've already had for a year. They can continue to use that with a service agreement. One of the comments that I heard, and you referenced it, is that it was involved in an accident. It's been devalued because of some of the physical damage to it, but if it's in their care, custody, and control, you know, they are obligated to, you know, maintain. We've done a significant amount of service here through the city of Orno on that vehicle too, I, I understand.
We have to provide it.
Yes, so, we're more than doing our part here with this, with this extra vehicle already, and to say, well, I guess now we want this vehicle, I don't think, I think we already obligated ourselves to, to commitment of that vehicle, and we've paid for it, and we paid eighty-five percent of the other one that they have, which is also new. So, so the reason I'm taking it off is because I think what is reasonable from our taxpayers' burden is, you know, we'll continue to let them use the police vehicle with a written agreement about how that is going forward, but the, the new command vehicle is based with our chief as part of our existing obligation. Makes sense to me, my brother.
I have some more questions, and so what vehicle is the chief in Long Lake currently utilizing?
So they have, there'd be two command vehicles, well, three. They have the, the existing command vehicle, which is pulling out of service, which these two new Tahoe's will replace. The one we talked about was bought within the provisions of the existing fire contract. That's the one that we refer to, where we pay eighty-five percent of that purchase. The second Tahoe we purchased at a hundred percent Orno expense, and is entitled and held with us, with the intent that that would be, that would be used. In the meantime, when one of the command vehicles was in the fire department, suffering some mechanical failures, we had a police cruiser that was coming out of service that we loaned, loaned the fire department so that they could continue to have two vehicles. Traditionally, one is, is driven by the chief, and one is driven by the duty officer for the fire department. So currently, they have the one Tahoe that was purchased, the new Tahoe, transitioning into service, and they still have the Ford Explorer that came from our police department. Is that named a fire now?
It is, it's wrapped, that's the other thing. The one that, the, the police vehicle we gave them has been now wrapped as a red. Are you familiar with wrap?
I understand, yeah.
Now that's a red vehicle, so if we gave them our command vehicle, took that one back, then we'd be unwrapping the vehicle, which, I mean, that doesn't seem.
But the, but the police vehicle's the one that had the accident, right?
It was, yeah, rear end, I think.
So the one that they, that was wrapped?
Correct.
Oh, I, I will say too, that it just is, that Ford Explorer, obviously, was coming out of, police coming out of service. So it, you know, it was not a new vehicle, if you gave it to them, it, you know, it had.
I did, you know, some.
Know where they covered any damage in that, some?
Yep.
There.
That was the discussion round.
And it was not, it was not a controversial discussion or anything, I don't want to paint it like that. It was just, you know, when, when it had the thunderbender, we're discussing what was, who's fixing it. And it was part of what led me to say, well, we probably should have had a loan agreement on this thing. When we first loaned it, it was only going to be for a couple of months until the replacement came in. But, as we all know, post-COVID, the lead times on vehicle replacements and all that drug out, so, you know, what was going to be a couple of month kind of loaner has now turned into a long-term loan.
So Adam, we purchased two command vehicles, one of which is being used by the chief Ben Ile. Chief Ben Ile here in Orno, the other one right now is being utilized where?
The, the other new Tahoe?
Yes.
Is being utilized by the Long Lake Fire.
Okay, so this other vehicle, they've got X, or I should say a former police vehicle that is being used, and then they're using one of the brand-new Tahos. So the request is for the vehicle that Chief Ben Ile is currently using?
The request was for that, and then there is also just to, transferring, there's also been, and then a, another request, just an email inquiry about whether we would be willing, as a city of Orno, to sell that Explorer to Long Lake.
The police vehicle.
The police vehicle, correct.
Well, if we did, we would sell it to the city of Long Lake, not to the Orno Fire, because we'd pay for eighty-five percent of it then. Right, that's a, that's very good.
That makes sense.
If, so if they wanted, if we wanted to sell it to the city of Long Lake, and then we would just get our auction price.
I would, I would certainly, we just put an auction, so whatever the auction price is.
I think they're, they're estimating around nine, ten thousand dollars or something like that.
That was the, the rough estimate based on the recent, I think, recent sales the police have done, or transitions that police have done.
Oh, so it's not nothing.
No, so if one capacity is Chief Ben Ile, right now he needs a command vehicle for his current, his current duty is in contract.
It's, yeah.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to give it his current, you know, duties.
Operationally, it's not required, but it is in the employment contract.
I see.
Okay, so I, I'll make a motion.
Well, I think you make a motion to deny this request, and then you make a separate motion on.
Drafting a new one.
Draft, we're drafting one for the, well, if we sell it to them, but.
Was that informal at this time?
That was, that was just.
So maybe, so the specific request is transferring the, the new command vehicle to them, and I'm just going to make a motion to deny that, right?
And everyone's leaving it at that, and they want to move that conversation ahead. I think we really give a direction that that would be fine.
Right.
I'll say Matt's motion on that.
I have a couple more questions. Adam, is this something, was this contract written, this contract is written by Orno, the ones we're looking at here?
Uh, yes, I, I modified that contract, and then it was, I think, a form provided. To me, it's based on a, a league model loan thing, so I actually changed it by putting the VIN number in and that sort of thing.
So Long Lake, yeah, we came up with a template like Adam suggested.
Okay, so the original contract was originally in Long Lake, from their side? For this, for this vehicle loan, did this originate, this contract in Long Lake?
The, the, the loan, the version, the loan agreement?
Yes.
Came from us. Yeah, that came from us.
Originated from us.
Just due from us.
From that law firm over there.
That's true. Okay, I'm just trying to understand if this request came from Long Lake, we're using.
Well, if they have the request to want the vehicle, we are saying that if we're gonna give you the vehicle because we already had problems with a, a crash, we need to have a loan agreement so it spells out what, what are those responsibilities are for the vehicle, whose possession it's in.
That makes sense to me, it's like our car rental, you need to have, I, I, I understand that. I'm trying to understand the origin of this request, you're saying it came about.
Because they won.
Councilmember Johnson is saying that they initially had said, no, we don't need this extra vehicle. And now they've found that there isn't any. So my understanding would have been that they were the ones maybe writing up this contract.
Well, it's ours, we own it, so we would produce a contract of the terms that we accept, that would make sense.
They said, hey, we want this vehicle and we said, hey, we're, here, we need a contract, uh, for it, so.
And we recommend agreements like this happen on favor, so we recommend this to any client that.
Absolutely, I mean. I'm in favor of if we have a vehicle that we are not needing to be in possession of or utilized to always, you know, in that shared, you know, helping out a, a city and that is providing fire service to the City of Orno at this time to be able to loan that. So I am in support of that, if there's something in the contract that we don't feel as a city is sufficient liability wise, then that's a different issue.
So does that change your position on the ladder truck of it?
On what?
On the ladder truck, because that's, that was a vehicle that we owned and we wanted the, part important to be able to utilize it.
Well, that issue is not in discussion right here.
Uh, no, but you were talking about, you, you'd like them to be able to, if they needed a vehicle that we had available, they should be able to use it. I'm just wondering if you, if you, with that statement, if you moved your position on the ladder truck.
If we're talking about the idea of protecting the City of Orno and liability for equipment that we own, I understand the benefit to having a contract for that.
Do you have any further questions on this motion? Just to kind of get back to the motion.
Right, agreed, I think we should get back to the motion. Yeah, would you say it again, please?
He's just denying this.
Yeah.
Deny this, this contract as it's written?
No, no, we're not denying the contract, the request from, we're denying the request from Long Lake to.
For Chief, for Chief James's, uh, vehicle.
Because it is part of his contract.
Right, contract, and they declined it, and that's why we put it in the contract, that's why James.
But we're, we're not recalling the other vehicle, that we have, they have a vehicle. We've already provided them a vehicle, which we, we're not obligated to do. So we, they, they have a vehicle, it's wrapped, it's in service. We're not recalling that, but I was gonna put, do another motion right after this one. It's also saying that's directing staff to get a written agreement from the City of Long Lake on that vehicle, so we, we have one in place.
Well, if, if they're not gonna buy it.
If they're not.
If they're not gonna buy it.
Right.
And if they're, if they're gonna buy it, then at some point we can just finish that. But I think it, it just should go on, not instead that any vehicle that we provide at same service or we're gonna, we're gonna want a contract and, and I think they've already seen the contract, so they know what it looks like.
Do, is, are those vehicles currently sufficient for the needs of the chief and the, how do you say, the officer of the day or the, um, duty officer?
The duty, yeah.
Yep.
It's a duty crew vehicle, they're using the new one for.
Is that a sufficient vehicle for the, for the person who was operating it as a duty officer?
I think you probably have to talk to the fire department over there, they're the ones who declined it to begin with. You'd have to ask them that question, and that's not our question to answer.
So they're using the Tahoe as a duty crew vehicle?
I'm not, I'm not, I.
Is that the duty?
I have the two vehicles.
Okay, but they can come back to us, I mean, we're not gonna leave them stranded. I mean, we've got them one vehicle out there, the question was just, can they recall?
And they wanna buy it, so.
And if they wanna buy it, we must, must ask them about it. So, uh, to, to answer your question, my motion was just, uh, simply denying this request and then staff will work with them on the follow-up on the purchase of the other.
Well, it's, it seems to me if it's in Chief Ben Ile's contract, we don't have another vehicle at this point to, of offer the City of Long, Long Lake, is that correct?
Another.
Correct.
Another command vehicle.
Yeah, yeah, so the, so the, the idea, if we, if we had gone forward with loading the Tahoe to Long Lake, the other provision was, um, I told them I needed the Explorer back because I had to meet the contractual agreement we have with the Chief Ben Ile.
Would that meet Chief Ben Ile's contractual obligation?
Yes.
So is there a reason that this couldn't happen, given that the officer of the day is the one who may need the outfitted vehicle that's designed for that purpose?
What do you mean? They have the vehicle, it's just a question of which one.
And I think James has already been driving this.
These are not the same vehicle though, are they?
They, 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 they are different, they are different manufactured, one's an Explorer, one's a Tahoe.
But it's one designed for fire and one is designed for police, so those are different units.
They, they, the, they, when we gave them the Explorer, they had to outfit it for use by the fire department. But they're, the, the chassis and all that are very, very similar, how, how they're outfitted inside with, uh, automation, communication and things like that are slightly.
The equipment in there is outfitted for fire.
I wanted to ensure that this vehicle that's currently in possession or wrapped for Long Lake is the one to do the duty that is required.
I already answered that, it's been outfitted for the fire.
Yeah, it is. And they had it, and they had it for a year and it's, it's wrapped.
Yeah, it is.
Okay, I wanted to turn that because then it makes me wonder why there's a request for another vehicle if this other one is in service and it's being utilized and it's doing the job. Just again, thinking of fire safety for the community, is that the best unit for the job?
Well, this request then comes saying, due to the issues with fire safety, we need this vehicle, that's not, I mean, right, the, the item, right? So that's not there, some were to change and that's what it comes to, then we'll entertain it then. In the meantime, there's a motion.
Not a second.
I, I accepted this, ten minutes ago.
Okay, Long Lake, ever say I am.
I.
I oppose. Don't that answer's four zero. Okay, that'll bring us to a finance report. Your first one.
Yeah.
I am Carrie Cranky and I will do the new first quarter financial report today.
Good for you.
So the first, first quarter financial, oh my gosh, let's start over. The first quarter done on my year-to-date budget and actual comparisons are included with this metal. Um, these are for the end of March, which represents twenty-five percent of the year. Revenues are currently at thirteen point three percent of the budget with expenditures at twenty-two point three percent of the budget. So, uh, this slide, this right here is the revenues and it says the low revenue percentage is normal for the first quarter. The timing of the revenue streams from account from the low revenue percentage for the quarter. The first property tax received represents fifty-one point five percent of the budget and we will not receive it until June. Um, various state grants and other government will not, will also not be received until later in the year. Uh, a revenue graph is included in this illustrated and typically low first quarter revenues is thirteen point three percent. And there's the graph, as you can see on the bottom, the yellow on the twenty-twenty-three, that's where we're sitting. And that's roughly about thirteen point three percent compared to the other years, we're a little bit old, but we're right on track of where we need to be for June, so. So the, um, general fund expenditures, at twenty-two point four percent, the overall expenditure amounts are on target for the year. Although some adjustments have been made, the expenditure statement should be viewed as non-adjusted. There, there are a few departments that are tracking over budget. The first one is the mayor council, as you see on the top, it's highlighted yellow. Everything that's highlighted in yellow is over the thirty percent. So there's four of them that I would have touched base on. Um, the department is currently at forty-four point eight percent for the mayor council. Um, most of it due to the fact that members in the organization of, like, the legal municipal cities, the suburban rate authority are already paid full of the year. Um, there's one particular light item that is a hundred percent of the budget, is a line is for training. There has been a higher than normal utilization of trainings of the little tooth council. This is relatively small department budget, so additional training will lead to budgets being exceeded for the year. Training lines in other departments could be utilized to cover these expenses. So, and then the next one is gonna be the law and legal services, that is at forty-five point two eight percent. Uh, this result is a number of lawsuits, preliminary of a mayor claim that has cost a total of eighty thousand dollars to date. Staff is considering recoding these expenses, expenses to the insurance fund as a way to keep the department at a budgeted levels for the year. And then the next one, as you can see, is the fire protection, but we've already touched base with that at the beginning, so we all know why we're overage on that for the.
Does that include the new amount?
That would include the.
Yeah, that would, yeah. So then the following one is the engineering, as you can see, is at fifty percent right now. Um, this is for the overage for the GIS as the city continues to improve the hard graph database. The department is a very small piece of the general fund budget. Staff will monitor this apartment budget through the rest of the year. Um, the next one will be the building permits. So the building permits revenue, as you can see, there's yellow and the purple. The yellow represents the twenty-twenty-two and the purple will represent the twenty-twenty-three revenues for the building permits. Um, January, we have an increase of fifteen thousand dollars from last year. February, we had an increase from seven thousand nine hundred from last year, and March, we actually had a decrease. Um, overall, for the building permit revenue for our first quarter of twenty-twenty-three, we have an increase of three point six percent.
Laura ran out, so we can't ask her all the stuff that's in her. Well, I think last time she said there was a whole bunch of. Maybe Adam can speak to that, I don't know. We, we do have, I mean, we are starting to see that it's that time of year where we're getting, um, increased, uh, number of building permits.
As on this slide, we will see two for the twenty-twenty-three for our new homes. We have three new homes just for March, is one point one million and a hundred and four permits, that's just for March. And the year-to-date, we have up to three hundred and eleven permits from January, which is so much. So you have quite an increase there, so. And then, um, new investments, as you can see, we have four new investments this year, um, for our first quarter. Um, we purchased them for a rate with both four, between four percent to five percent. So that's a key increase from last year, when we only purchased them between one and two percent. Um, what the city has earned in, in interest for the first quarter of twenty-twenty-three is seventy-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars. That's just the earned interest, um, compared to last year's when the earnings were only twenty thousand three hundred dollars. So the difference between the two, fifty-one thousand dollars, compared to last year to this year.
Except for the fire.
I know.
We have left fire out of that. We, we will earn, um, we will earn the maximum we can under the Long Lake laws for that, uh, for that, I mean, that city under Orno under right now.
So, yeah, that wraps up the slides.
All right, you did a good job.
You're awesome, thank you. Any questions? Staff on that? All right, well, thank you much. You're on, anything else to report from the finance director?
Um, no, that's, um, well, I guess I do, we look, our audit, we'll start their audit next Monday. Their, their, in, in city all portion of their audits.
We're on time, we're on time and on track.
We are.
All right, that'll bring us to our public works report. Adam, number eleven, position, description, recruit approval, utility maintenance.
I'll ask DJ to come join me. All right.
Hi, during lots.
Uh, so I'll, I'll just tee it up, uh, so we've been looking, uh, within the public works, uh, organizational structure at, uh, changing, uh, changing a few things. Uh, in this instance, what, uh, what we're, uh, bringing forward is the, uh, creation of a utility worker position. Um, not, uh, this does not change the overall number of, uh, work, the workforce within public works, but rather would reclassify, uh, two of the, two of the positions, uh, from general maintenance workers, uh, to utility workers. Um, some reasons, uh, why we're looking at doing this, um, is, uh, is a recognition of the additional licensing, uh, and expertise required, um, by, uh, for a utility worker. We have an ever-increasing, uh, technology base, well, within our, our city utilities. And what we're talking about here primarily is our city sewer and water, uh, infrastructure and maintaining those. Um, so trying to, to recognize that, um, trying to bring some of the things, uh, that we currently have to outsource, uh, to contractors to do in the inspection role in our utilities, bringing that in-house, of being able to focus on a couple of the workers to send the required trainings and have each, so that we can do that stuff ourselves. Um, and also, uh, as a recognition and an ability to, 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 to create some growth opportunities within the department. Um, currently, uh, within the department, uh, you, you know, you could come in, uh, as a, uh, maintenance worker. Um, the only opportunity you might have for, uh, some kind of increases if one of the, uh, one of the two supervisors was, uh, to retire and leave, you might, might be able to apply for those jobs. But this would allow us, this allows us to, to bring folks in as a maintenance worker in our streets, in our stormwater, and those who show the aptitude and, uh, for it, uh, we can send them off to school for some of the utilities things so that when, um, when these utility working positions become available, that we could, uh, build from within. Um, it is something, uh, that was broached to, uh, staff during our labor negotiations, uh, this past go-around about, do we have, uh, could we look at having a way to recognize those additional skills, uh, within, within the workforce? The, uh, I've got on there the budget impact, we just did, uh, some, some rough numbers, making the assumption if, uh, if the most senior, uh, person, uh, in the existing, uh, structure was to be selected for one of these positions, what would that mean? Uh, what it means to the budget, uh, in Humber, it is about a fifty-seven hundred dollar difference for each of those positions, um, which we have, uh, easily within the budget, um, some retirements, um, and then something that would be easily budgeted into future budgets. And also important to, again, to recognize that those two particular positions, um, that labor is budgeted out of our utilities, which are enterprise funds, um, so those are, um, those are not tax-based, um, positions, funded positions. And I probably spoke too much, uh, let, let the department head say, say a few things.
What's for you, DJ? Oh, I'm good. Um, we met, we were trying to do it with the HR committee a couple of months ago, um, to pitch this plan. Um, we've done a separation last two years ago in Parks Department where everybody was under the maintenance umbrella and now we have Parks Maintenance Workers, so it's just one more piece that we're, we're trying to get focused, to get a, uh, more skill set within the utilities. Um, doesn't mean that the individuals will not be helping out streets or parks, uh, but their primary focus will be on the utilities. We have fifty-two sewage lift stations that we maintain, I created them in our fire hydrants, three water treatment facilities, and it's becoming more focused in those areas, uh, of the preventive events. And, you know, they'll still be on, on full rotation, uh, still be responsible, we're still removing all that, but it's just a more focused area, uh, during the daytime, they'll be responsible for it, so.
Well, it just goes to show you, I mean, we talked about the lift stations and there's, kind of, the, the deal bad is there's no free lunch. We've got, I think, forty-six lift stations, we started years ago, we didn't have, uh, backup generators probably, so we put backup generators in all of them. And by doing that, you have more things, you got preventative maintenance and we outsource that and then we bring it in-house. I mean, it's very smart to have, have to send house, you can take care of it anyway, but it's still bad, there's just no free lunch. If you're gonna take care of these things and take care of them well, it's gonna probably cost a little more, but you're gonna be taken care of and that's the bottom line that we all will worry about. But I think it's a smart thing to do, and, uh, with that for a while, I'm not sure if anybody else has any questions.
Uh, the only thing I was gonna add is, um, and, and what I like hearing too is, is we're finding ways to train our own people so that we're outsourcing less and that's part of what this allows us to do. I think that's being self-sufficient on this stuff as we can, I think, is to the, to the city's benefit too.
Right, exactly.
So I can support.
There's one in there.
Any other thoughts? Grabbing a motion?
Uh, let's see, I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve the, let's see here, the utility maintenance.
The attached atmosphere is self-up everything. And authorize staff to initiate the recruiting process to fill the same.
All right, second. I'll, 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 you want to? Okay, I'll second.
I'll, I'll, I'll say I.
Aye.
Don't that answer's four zero.
Thank you.
Yeah, nice job.
That'll bring us to our city general report.
I have nothing to report.
We should, we should grab you a, a tag here so we don't look and think that you're soaring.
Yeah.
And when the camera's on you, it's, it's addressing you, it's sore man.
Basically twins.
Okay, we'll come back to Adam again and the city administrator and your reporters, what do you have to think from the public works? What do you have to think from the public works, you want to add a little?
Uh, briefly, um, well, a quick update, we had our spring cleanup, um, at City Hall over the weekend. Um, we had over four hundred residents, uh, stop between Spring Park, Ronald, Windtime Beach, and Long Lake. Um, we saw a number of construction debris items this year, um, and our, where do they find all the scrap metal that can drop off? Um, good positive thing is, it gets out of our, uh, ditches and our newbies, um, so we're in the process of having that stuff removed out of the yard, um, and given to us, cleaned up and, and even forward for the summer. Um, over the, uh, Doug, well, as you mentioned, the forty-six lift stations there, last Tuesday, Wednesday, um, the police department was partially involved with the, uh, car chase, it ended up, uh, a vehicle accident, took out a major power line in the area. We had eighteen of those forty-six lift stations without power for about three hours. Of those eighteen, nine of them had backup generators. So those other nine, the, the public work staff had to, uh, total, or will generate the drone, um, pump the lift station down, and move on to the next one. So it went on for about three to four hours, and then they get back to bed and get up and do it right away, uh, seven o'clock in the morning, again, with the normal daily activities.
Um, Tom, thanks, Tom.
Yeah, good job.
That was, uh, that happened, that happened very fast.
Exactly, exactly. Unfortunately, those are some minor infrastructure damage, uh, to our non-utility, so.
All right. Uh, well, we got DJ here, I was, I was at the, the brush site this weekend on Saturday, and I'm sorry, who was working there?
Uh, our, one of our seasonal employees, uh, Rick Rohr.
Yeah, and, and Rick was there, he was very busy there. A lot, lot of cleaning up going on this weekend, too. Um, and he doing a really good job, he, we made some changes to the rules of there, so it's, uh, three yards, I believe it is, a day, uh, per resident, um, and then there's a fee if you go over and above that, but the other thing is, there is a, a maximum diameter, I think it's six inches or, uh, six-inch diameter in size, and, and somebody had dumped off, down in there, like, twenty-four inch diameter stuff that can't be chopped up. Um, but anyway, good job, DJ, he was doing a really good job, uh, educating everybody on some of the changes and be cooperative as people are learning, and that's good.
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a change, and what we've been finding, the, the seasonals that have been working out there, the, uh, we're gonna have to do some more public education on it, um, for residents, our disguising the laws, um, in, in the load, um, and it absolutely should be that way around, because they're putting the brush on top of the logs, and there's a good, that's not a brush, it's a line, um, truck or trailer, um, but, uh, as they offload that, um, especially when a visitor comes, comes with dust, and they're, they're getting them through, and then they're going in spec as they're unloading, and they're finding that's many larger logs.
So it's twenty-four inches is the recording?
No, six inches, uh, anything six inches and under, uh, before we were accepting any size, everything minus three stumps.
Major stuff will pair. Yeah, but the problem is, we have that in the news, like, DJ, we do, right?
We do, um, we did a lot of public education in the newsletter, out on the city website, email, um, and do signage.
It turns out that everybody reads those. Um, but the, the problem is, is there's a need for it, just because it's not working for us, I mean, because what you worry about is that stuff ends up in a ditch or something, right? And people were bringing it, and some people are forced to leave with it, I mean, does it make it whole?
Yeah.
You know, so, I don't know what the solution is, but I think we gotta keep talking about how to be improved, because maybe it just means putting that stuff in a different area, and we deal with it differently, um, but, because we still need it, and it's an important resource, I mean, there's, there's pack, and there's, it's being filled up.
It's being filled up, and we, as one of you may recall, we did, we had two separate locations, uh, for doing brush and, and our organics and our wood chips, we're back at our existing public works facility, leaf and grass drop-off, we've now condensed and moved all of that out to the public works, excuse me, to brush site facility, um, probably growing. So we're doing some more additional changes out there, um, trying to make the flow a little bit easier and a little bit better for the residents as they, uh, as they come in, so minimize the, that was that, so.
So can you look into that and just let us know about how can we handle the bigger stuff and where, where can people put it?
Yeah, so, oh, one of the rationales behind that was, uh, when we had that work session, we were talking about how could we, uh, continue to provide the brush site, um, capability. We did, uh, did look out across, uh, neighboring communities about how they managed it, and that was one of the primary ways was limiting.
Was limiting the size.
Limiting the size, so you don't get the stumps and the big logs. I think part of the rationale in that is that, you know, the, if, if a resident's, you know, just trimming their trees or doing the spring cleanup of the yard, uh, you don't end up with thirty-four inch diameter log. You probably had, you probably had an arborist or a contractor come in there and drop that tree for you, well, they'll, they'll probably take those logs away, and if you, if you pay more, you can find, there are some groups, folks out there who are looking for logs that can be used for firework. Okay, so, that, that was part of that.
A future firewood drop-offs.
All right, thank you.
All right, and we'll bring it back to the, uh, city administrator engineer report, we got number twelve, which is public works facility twenty-one dash thirty-nine, the IT, the AV, and the security systems installation approval.
Uh, Mayor is a member of the council, uh, this item is, uh, is a continuation of, uh, the new, uh, public works facility, uh, project, um, and what this, uh, this item is to approve all of those, uh, audio/video, IT, uh, type items for the facility. Um, just to clarify, so when we went out, I know there was some questions on this, when we went out for, um, bids for the actual construction of the facility, um, last fall, that was for construction of the shell and the site work and what have you, and there are some items that were not included in, um, in that bid, um, at, at the recommendation of the architect and, and others on, on best practices on how to do this. Um, and so audio/video was one of those things that, uh, that was recommended to, we do as a separate item. So we did go out, uh, to our, our, our vendor, uh, security and sound, to, uh, basically get all the internal pieces, uh, figured out, uh, security cameras, access control, um, voice and data within throughout the building, uh, and then we went to the Logis Group, who, uh, provides our, um, bigger picture, uh, access, uh, to the internet and what have you. They also provide us a service, uh, for managing, um, fiber optics, the, the external, uh, type stuff. They're the same folks who helped us out with the, uh, fiber optic, uh, connection to this building not too long ago, connecting us to the Enford County, um, trunk lines. Um, and so we got a quote, uh, they went out and got a, uh, several quotes, uh, below quote being, uh, from our big, uh, company, Jerron Fiber, basically from the corner of, um, Kelly Avenue and Beer, where the Enford County trunk line is, um, south, uh, across the bridge into, to the, uh, to the public works.
And speaking of all the technology, and we need it all being put in at the same time you're building the building, you can't do it after, we gotta do it simultaneously, so we gotta get this in place, so they can coordinate with the contractor, get in there, put everything in place while the building's getting built.
Adam, so you said this hundred and thirty-five, I heard a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, is it? Um, this expenditure was not built into the bonding, this is separate, the sixteen million.
Well, this was, this was built into the overall, uh, budget for the project, it was not included in when we went out for bids.
Just for the charge itself, right.
So are there other expenditures? Well, first of all, what is the, um, current cost that the, the bill dealt? Where are we at in terms of the current cost?
Expenditures?
Yes.
I have to look that up for you.
Okay.
Uh, budget and expenditures were, uh, just right around seventeen million.
Seventeen million, and that does not include this cabling?
No, that includes this cabling and the other, the other items we have.
What is, and this is good, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, DJ, something else?
I would say there are some other, uh, things that we have not brought forward yet that are also within that figure, uh, furnishings and internal equipment, um, uh, shoot, um, the, uh, bringing, bringing the building into service, uh, and a few other items, smaller items like that.
And this is gonna be coming out of the facilities fund?
Yes, everything for the building comes through the facilities fund, so, and then the facilities fund is, uh, has a bunch of revenue, has different revenue sources, uh, that is from the facilities levy, and then, um, also, as, uh, I mean, Ron was mentioning earlier, we have the bonded money, which is currently, for the building, for the facility, which is currently invested, and as, as, as those, uh, as the, uh, as we go through this building process and we get to the point where we need to pay the various bills for the, uh, for the construction, and that those monies are transferred from those investments into the facilities fund, so we can then pay our bills.
Okay, so we're at seventeen million, and that includes this expenditure?
Correct.
Um, and what other, you mentioned something else about furnishings?
Yep.
Is that this year, and that's next year?
Um, I'm guessing that I'll probably bring something, uh, to the council sometime late this fall or this winter, so that we can procure those, uh, furnishings for the building for when it's open, uh, when it's open right now, it's projected to be open in May of next year, so.
Okay.
Precaution would probably actually be, probably, precaution would probably be early in twenty twenty-four.
Okay, are there any other expenditures that you foresee this year with regard to the public works?
Other than continuing to pay, uh, the contractor who's building it as they present their payer requests as we progress, no.
Okay. Ron, do you know the current balance on the facilities fund?
Right now, there's around, well, in the foreign funded, which is where the bonds went, we're just transferring two million dollars to Arable, because one of the approvals tonight was to pay the contractor two million dollars, so there'll be thirteen million left at the foreign fund you ever paid after tonight. Um, and then we have, we have three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of tax levy going to the facilities fund, and so, about thirteen million, three seventy-five at the moment.
Okay, that's it, that's all I have, thanks.
Okay, any other questions or any motion?
There's no motion.
All right. Okay, move to, okay, move to approve the proposals for monitoring and s- security and some variety AV and security systems in the public works facility.
Oh, I'll second that.
I'll make a favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes for our city. Okay, that'll bring us to, uh, public comments. An opportunity for the public to address the city council, excuse me. Council not engage in discussion or take up action on items presented at this time. However, the council may refer you as a staff or follow consideration at a future meeting. Speaker should state their name and home address according to their speaking. If you are paying for swearing and personal attacks, it would be greatly appreciated. And as Martin Luther King said, never succumb to the temptation of bitterness. So, does anybody have a, come up, please take the name and address, you have three minutes.
My name is the Michael.
Please, yes, please.
Kathy Sweetman, uh, four seven five Denver Drive, Orno. And thank you to all of you for allowing me to speak this evening. Tonight, I rise here to speak because of my concern regarding the dysfunctional pattern of communication regularly, um, displayed during the Orno City Council meetings, and I also would be heard us not to comment that this evening, things have run very well. I have observed, however, that verbal abuse pervades these meetings, and frequently, for example, instead of addressing a person's argument or position, the person's personal characteristics are viciously attacked. Name-calling, cursing, accusatory speech, yelling, and gaslighting are frequent in meetings. The result is pervasive fear and intimidation. The Orno City Council code states that one of the chief roles of the Orno mayor is to exert leadership in city affairs. Further, this responsibility often calls protect rather than overact, uh, direction. I add that effective leaders also pause and listen carefully to others. Effective leaders respectfully consider input from diverse perspectives and move to maintain respectful civil communication on the gross and civic matters. These essential leadership qualities are not displayed by Orno City Council leadership, rather we have embraced verbal abuse as though it's normal, and I would like to clearly say, it is not normal, and it is not good for our city, nor is it good for our community. Most of us citizens sitting in this room, during these meetings, most of us are not engaging in abuse, yet we witness it time after time. I personally struggle feeling helpless, and I suspect that other people feel similarly. And I do not claim to have a solution, but if a great Greek quote, philosopher Plato is correct, that silence gives consent, tonight I must openly object. I do not consent to silently witnessing abusive discourse, and I will stand in support of those who are seeking to restore civility and respect to our city meetings and to our community. I plead with you, citizens of Orno, join together, speak out clearly, to restore civility in our public discourse. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Bradingham, thirty-one eight-five, county road six, and I would like to speak on behalf of myself and say that I entirely support Dr. Sweetman's comments. Um, also, simply because I believe that the citizens of this city have a right to be heard, and Ms. Kim Carswell was not able to be here, uh, this evening, she did ask me to read her statement, and I am going to do so in support of I, five, citizen. From Kim Carswell at two sixty-one Signet Place, this statement is in support of Kathy Sweetman's statement on civility. The way this council shows up and interacts with the public suggests a lack of interest and respect for citizens. This lack of respect and interest is also observed within the council when certain members speak. The disinterested stone faces that we see in the audience suggest a dysfunctional team leading the city. Today, I ask the council to build a code of ethics, and I will be proposing one in future meetings. The council expects civility from the citizens, and the citizens deserve civility from the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I buy a couple extra minutes?
No.
No? Just checking. Uh, Todd, we're ten seventy old, welcome back, bro. Um, it's, what I basically am doing here tonight is to ask for a, um, open forum of communication about the fire department coming up. I've been informed that on May twenty-second, a presentation is gonna be made, a couple weeks are gonna go by, and then the final presentation will remain on June twenty-second in this forum, where people only have a comment for three minutes. Um, what I'm asking for is a chance for the men, women, and children that are protected by Long Lake Fire Department to have the opportunity to ask questions, hear answers, and have a dialogue back and forth about this, not just making a statement and letting it go for. Um, a lot of the questions they're gonna have are the what, the when, the how, how much, and more importantly, the why. A lot of these questions have come my way recently because of a retired firefighter. Some of those, just to name a few, are the why, um, what's wrong currently with the Long Lake Fire Department? Um, eighty percent of the costs are covered by Orno, but eighty percent of the calls are reserved by Orno. What's wrong with that? Does Orno have an oversight of the budget? And if so, have they ever looked into the budget and what's going on? Has F. Orno ever been asked to increase the CIP? And if so, what was their response to that, and do they do it regularly? Um, why are the citizens paying for two fire chiefs right now? They're paying eighty percent of Long Lake's fire chief and a fire chief that currently is being paid with no fire department. And on that note, he's doing a needs assessment with no fire department, so there's a need for a fire department, that's an easy assessment. Um, you guys have given off for Long Lake to purchase their station, their rolling stock and equipment, but that's already been paid for by the public, so why should the public do that twice? Um, I'm gonna just move to a quote that I thought was really interesting. I feel very strong about the need for more transparency of how, when, um, and to what our tax paid dollars are being spent. Um, as a business owner and an operator, I've always found it very important to have and ask a lot of the right questions, so when you make a decision, it is a well-educated decision resulting in a better success rate or su- and solution the first time. These types of dialogue sessions need to be well-documented at the city council level, so all have a better understanding of specific topics that are being cast. When there are major projects- When there are major projects to be done, we need more public open houses and more public input. When citizens come to the council members with questions, I feel they deserve a better answer than what is currently at the city council and the city council is currently serving. We have, we all have a better, that way we all have a better understanding of where our tax, tax dollars are being spent. I really like that quote, I think it's an awesome quote.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
And I want to also want you to.
Chelsea Bevry. I'm not disappointed that you had a nice quote, too many was up in your sleeve one of this time. I find it funny that, yeah, roll your eyes, keep going. I find it funny that you say that people shouldn't swear or attack personally when you two are the ones that call people out on your podium. And then you call people out and then run away for months at a time. Very interesting. As you can see, everybody wants you to figure this out. So what is your game plan, are you just going to sit and wait for it to end? Because it's not going to end. You're going to need to do something to fix it. Pay attention here. You're going to have to fix it. You're poison and you spread it. So all these other people, you find this funny too? All these other people listen to you, you're poison and you with your January sixth stuff. And you know, it's just, it's both. And you want to talk about not swearing, give me a break. We need new people in the council. Everybody wants you to answer this, to figure it out. Again, it's not going to go away, figure it out, Hannah.
Anybody else?
Brad Erickson, twenty-four eighty-five, Independence Road. I've got a proposal this evening, we'll get to that in a minute. I did a FOIA request, a Freedom of Information Act request. For anyone that doesn't know what FOIA is. And I have no less than five emails here that came in in December of twenty twenty regarding his links to the crowd boys. Okay, so Victoria knew about it, you knew about it, of course you knew about it. You were there, I don't think you knew, I don't know. And some other folks. And nothing was done, so a lot of people up there knew and are sheltering this guy. So my question is, who knew about the J six stuff? And why isn't anyone coming forward and talking about that? My proposal this evening has to do with you, Mr. Walsh. I found this, I've been in touch with some different Jewish organizations, as you know. I've also been in touch with the head of the Minnesota GOP. There's a statement here, I'll read from him in a second regarding you. This is my proposal. Seven hundred mayors across the, across the country have spoken out against the growing anti-Semitism. I'll read some of the ones from Minnesota and I would challenge you guys to sign up on this. Sign up for this, okay? As a city, as a mayor, as an elected official, do the right thing for once. Blade, Brooklyn Center, Burns, Billy, Dinah, Golden Valley, Jordan, Mendota Heights, Minneapolis, Benettonka, Plymouth, Ridgefield, Rochester, St. Louis Park, your alma mater, and St. Paul. We need to add Orno to this list. I want to remind you of what brought us to this point. You, Mr. Walsh, so you can call me whatever names you want. You can call me whatever names you want, okay? But you guys brought me here, okay? This is from you recently, the Michigan GOP had this up. These are all the rings they collected from the Jewish people after they murdered them. You know whose rings are not in this box? My grandparents. You know who would not be here today if those rings were in this box? My father. And you said that stuff. You know what the difference is with the Michigan GOP or the Michigan State House? They voted the very next day to condemn that kind of rhetoric. You guys still have the interview that is sitting here. And then this was from the Minnesota GOP. Right, you know about this, this is a bigger problem. You want to hear what the, what David Han had to say about you, Mr. Walsh.
Anybody else? I've seen nobody else, I'll.
Reggie Anderson, thirty-two oh five, Crystal Benner Road. I'm going to just give you a quick update on what's going on in the O M C D. But I want to commend this young lady here for probably giving her first finance meeting. And for Ron, sticking around because he wants to go bye-bye, but he's cuddling to her. I think that's fantastic. And the public works incentive thing, I think is a fantastic idea because we have great public works folks. And if the only way they can get ready is to do what Adam's talking about, I think that's fantastic. So at the O M C D, you may or may not know, but we, our executive director are retired. And so we are searching for a new executive director. And we have a wonderful interim guy. He was the St. Edwards, Adam's job in St. Louis Park for quite a few years. And then did an interim at Spring Park just most recently and we were lucky to get him. He's, he's smart, I'm trying to get him to stay on in, in low, low capacity because he does more half-time than most people do, full-time obviously. We're suggesting eighty-five thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand. Not we, but that's the scolonnate, eighty-five to a hundred and twenty thousand for a salary for a five hundred thousand dollar budget. Adam doesn't need to know that much. So, and a bylaws, which I've dug into, say that we may hire an executive director, doesn't say we shall hire. So there's a little bit of push and shove there. But anyway, so the process, we're moving forward at light speed. But the process has slowed down, which I think is fantastic. So we're working on the budget to have a finance committee group that I can chair of and also the treasurer. And as you know, within cities, we're paying, I thought, more money than they should. We had a huge surplus. So we, we got it passed in a, in a operations committee meeting for, to shoot for thirty-five percent instead of, we are now at ninety-eight percent. And, but we, we spent a hundred grand out of that this year and the budget for, for twenty twenty-three is to take a hundred and twenty-five out of there and charge the cities less. And that will be the, hopefully, the budget that goes forward, which I think will be approved. But anyway, so that's it, well, I'll, I'll give you an update. I'll give you an update.
We've got to get you on the agenda, I go next time, so you don't have to just give a whole presentation.
Can't forget, we'll, we'll come back and when the budget gets close.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comments? Let's see, now we'll close public comments and we will come to the mayor council report. Council member Benson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My intention in bringing the topic of a community survey up in a work session was to bring the city of Orno up to speed with some of our surrounding communities and neighbors. Our last comprehensive third-party survey was done about fifteen years ago as part of our comp plan and we have not done a comprehensive third-party statistically significant survey since then. You know, there was a survey monkey or something internal done a while back, but that's not the same as a statistically accurate survey that's comprehensive. And especially I'm sensitive as a new council member, how do I know how well I'm doing my job or how I'm as a council or representing citizens if we do not take the time to ask them in a way that's comprehensive and organized? And in reviewing the citywide surveys from the Dinah, Rizada, and Trista, they've all conducted surveys fairly recently in the last maybe four or five years. And again, we haven't done that in about fifteen. So I know as somebody who appreciates data and being able to make informed decisions based on what I see represented in our community, that would be something that I would find very helpful. So my intention in bringing it forward in an earlier time of the year was to allow for the possibility of budgeting so that in twenty twenty-four, usually in February, March, that's when communities are doing those surveys. And that would put us in the running to be able to conduct one for our citizens. And again, I think sometimes it's easy to imagine somehow that we have our fingers on the pulse of our community through emails or conversations here and there like we all do as council members. It's quite different to hear from four or five hundred residents at a time and have that data crunch those numbers run. So I, I for one would like to bring that to our community and offer that as part of the services that we provide to the people who elected us. In other news, I attended the Long Lake Fire Pancake Breakfast yesterday and it was very heartening to see how much care and effort goes into this event and really drawing in folks from the wider community to come and support our fire department. It's been a while since I attended and when I checked about an hour before the end of the event, they said there were about twelve hundred people there and I'm sure there were more after that. So they did a great job as usual and I did have a chance to meet their new chief, which was really exciting. I did talk to residents both from Orno and Long Lake and was struck by the common theme and the subject of fire service that comes up. And I do feel that Orno residents and the wider community do not have as good a grasp on this issue as they would like. Fire service is one of the most vital services that we provide to our residents. And it's also one that we as a council have the opportunity to elevate to center stage in terms of community awareness and engagement. And we've not done this in a comprehensive way to date and it's something that I would like to see changed. I see a significant benefit to the city of Orno hosting an open house forum with the community before any decisions are made regarding the future of our fire service. From my perspective, this is important for three reasons. First, it's an opportunity to build trust. This council is aware that members of the public would like accurate, comprehensive information on this issue. And like my colleagues on council, I've received questions about this issue. There have been conversations on social media on this subject. Building and maintaining trust is an essential aspect of the work of governance. And as council members, we are really in a unique position to foster trust in our community. A forum can be a step towards showing residents that we are dedicated to voting time to this issue aside from regular meetings. Second, as elected members of council, we have a duty to inform our residents about city issues, especially those that can significantly change their quality of life and their tax burden. The issue of fire service is complex and as officials, we are uniquely positioned to be able to inform the public on this subject to include the historical context, contract information, the current financial considerations, and most importantly, the quality of service in the future. And if we don't provide this to our residents who are asking in present day, who will? Finally, the issue of fire service is one that does encompass in our community much history and tradition. Many council members have served before, those of us who sit here now and many will in the future. And it's essential to demonstrate, in my opinion, for the record and for future generations, that we took the time in this moment to listen to and inform our citizens to the best of our ability. So that's my thoughts on the fire service. And again, I do support the idea of a public forum. I would appreciate that prior to any deliberations or votes on this council. That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Senator Johnson.
I was just, special thanks, our dock on a big island got put out. And if you have those pictures, two, two people to thank, one, one was your dock. But, oh, he's in the back now. Richie Anderson with North Shore Marina, he stores our docks, so they're floating docks, so they have to stay in the water, here's a picture of them. We had damage to them last year. They were wood posts that went through there and they were damaging the dock. And in another picture is a close-up, Tonka built, installed the docks and then added these rollers on there to prevent future damage so we can have this dock for a long time. But thanks to North Shore for allowing us to keep them there and to Jake with Tonka built for getting it installed. It's out there right now, so that's, that's all I have.
Councilor President. Nice picture.
Those, that is, that is beautiful.
Isn't it?
Good work.
It's custom work, it's, it's rulers.
Really nice.
And so that's what wears out. Because the dock goes up and down.
Yeah, you have that beautiful.
Yeah.
That's great work. Lady had comments this evening about decorum in council. And I agree with her wholeheartedly. I think if things are looked at honestly, I think the council's held itself in check remarkably well due to the onslaught of slander, viciousness, lies, threats, physical violence and so forth. We conduct ourselves in this manner for our community because we represent the community of Orno. But when we're slandered on a regular basis and lied to, lied about, lied in social media, it gets a little old folks, it really does. It's damaging and the, you know, the irony of it is, they don't even live in the community.
Sure hurts.
So, and again, that's the example right there.
So I'm not in the community, so that means you can act like an asshole?
Again, proving my point on a consistent basis. But I agree with your remarks that things should be conducted in a common manner. The questions were already answered previously, months ago. So those issues have already been addressed. The object is to get cities' business done in a respectful manner, to handle each other in a respectful manner. And that's for the benefit of every citizen and everybody in our community. And I'd also like to, you know, with Alyssa, commend the Long Lake Fire Department for another great breakfast. Terrific event, it's great for families and children. Wasn't able to make it unfortunately, I missed it, but those events are always fantastic to go to. So, and they appreciate your support. That's it.
I was also at the pancake breakfast, it was a great event, got to meet the new chief and talked to a whole bunch of firefighters and just great people. I was DJing, he laughed over you right there.
He's on over flights.
So that was great, that was, it was a great, it always was a great event, that's for sure. And the food's good as well. I also was at the Northwest Hennepin League of Nationals and met with the new sheriff, Pennsyl County, Juan Whit. Met her last year when I was helping her get elected. And she's a great lady. She is running into the same problems I think all the law enforcement agencies have run across. They're down thirty percent in their sheriffs. They've had to turn down two cities that needed help with their, with their policing. They've had to tell them to go to the neighboring communities because they just don't have enough staff because they're understaffed now as well. I've heard lately, Golden Valley was having, had a, had a, had a contract, had downed six officers when they had thirty because they went anti-police and it just shows you what happens. And I will tell you that we have always been supportive of our police. We got the blue line flag up there and we have, we're fully staffed at thirty officers. So we have done, we've walked the walk and talked the talk and done what you're supposed to do to protect your community. I had another coffee with the mayor on the second Wednesday of the month. It's always interesting, that's for sure, the people that come and talk and all the interesting conversation. It's the second Wednesday of the month, so if you'd like to come in May, that's going to be May, uh, what's that going to be here? It's going to be May tenth, so May tenth at nine o'clock, we have coffee and donuts if you want to come. Anywhere from half an hour to an hour depending on the conversation that goes on, it's always fun. The Orno Foundation just had their educate, Orno Foundation for Education just had their yearly bash just last weekend. They raised money for the schools, for all the stuff that the schools doesn't have money for. It was a fabulous event. When COVID came, they've had, they lost a lot of people that were at these events before. So thank God it's starting to come back and they raised a lot of money, so hats off to them. It was sadly fabulous. There's also a couple of great things that are happening over in Orno. See if I can pull up the, all the names on this thing here. They have speech team qualified for state and, there it is, the Orno speech teams qualified for state and nationals, Maya, Howgan, McKenna, Monger and Emily Middleton are state qualified. Maya, Howgan, McInnes-Monger, and Emily Middleton are state qualifiers. Congratulations to them. Uh, Barrett Buck, Maddy Door, Emily Middleton, and Maddy Door again, admitted to nationals qualification, so our hats off to them. It's an absolutely fabulous job, and, uh, parents should be absolutely enthralled with themselves with that. The basketball team, the boys' basketball team took third in the state, so hats off to them as well to get all the way that far, because if you don't get third, you don't get a banner. You get third, you get a banner for second and third, so that's a big deal. Um, I will also say as a proud father, my, uh, my daughter, who's a level-nine gymnast, took, uh, was a state champion in her age level. Uh, she also won the regionals, uh, a week and a half ago, and won the regional championship of the seven-state area. Now, in a few weeks, she's gonna go into nationals to compete with the twenty-five states, compete against half of them, with all the champs going to compete. So it's an exciting time with a lot of stuff going on. Um, you got to see, uh, a couple of things we had to talk about tonight with the, um, uh, the lift stations and all the things that we've done, the public works facility that's going up, all the things that we're doing to make sure Orno was taken care of, went into the next century, all on the budget. Don't leave anything in here on social media. It's all on our budget, it's been done well. And I will end with a couple of fabulous quotes. My first one is from Peter Rosaba. Said, "It behooves every man to remember that the work of the critic is altogether secondary importance, and that in the end, progress is accomplished by the man who does things." And my last quote is by Robin Benincasa. Says, "You don't inspire your teammates by showing them how amazing you are, you inspire them by showing them how amazing they are." So with that, motion to adjourn.
So move.
One favor, say that.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
You're amazing. You guys are amazing.
Absolutely.
Absolutely amazing. What's a lie? The lie, the video's a lie. Didn't come from you, Kipro, fishing bar? The J-six stuff, that's a lie. Cowboy stuff, that's a lie.
Yeah, we did not know we're not all. We did not know.
Everybody here knew about it, said nothing. Absolutely nothing. Absolutely. You an anti-saboteur? Not a chatter about that. Maybe you should prove it or not. That hurts. Saying that is hard, huh? Shit about? Okay, I have to take a bite, juke boy when you're a kid, what's wrong? Heartbroken by a juke girl? What's wrong with you, man? What the hell is wrong with you? You don't have anything to do with.